Okay, we'll call it's order this October the 23rd, 2019, meeting the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Mr. Stottermeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Present.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Mr. Dunn?
Present.
If you'd all stand joyous in a pledge allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation. It will be led by Pastor Kim Wilcox of the North Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, would you want me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, you know, we, uh, we thank you for the changing seasons and the way creation even follows you, and, and Father, what a, what a beautiful season we have this year, and, uh, we credit that to you, and, and Father, today we, we come, we lift up each one of these commissioners to you, knowing that they have, uh, a heavy load, uh, lots of things going on, different times, and, so Father, we just ask for your, your protection over them, uh, for your guidance and direction, and, and Father, may they follow you in the decisions that they make, and, and, uh, the thoughts that come across, and the things that need to be done, and, Father, that you would just help them to be better, to be able to, uh, to serve, uh, the people of Franklin County, and, Father, we thank you for each one of them that you have, have placed over us and in leadership, and, Father, we just submit to them today and, and ask you to guide and direct their decisions, uh, Father, we thank you for the freedoms that we have in this country, Father, they are, uh, many, and, uh, we give you credit to that as well, uh, so we give you praise for this day. We thank you in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. There's no claim vouchers or tax changes. Oh, well, I just lost my computer. Okay, I guess we'll do it by paper. Okay, any correspondence and organizational business? Anyone sign up for public comment?
Yes.
Okay, a citizen who desires to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited five minutes, and the commission will not take action to discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business. Public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Joe Ferguson?
Joe Ferguson, 3335 Rock Creek Road, Ottawa, Kansas, 66067. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners? Today, I'm, David Lee is gonna be asking to upgrade some road graders. And I'm mentioning this not because I object to it, because I'm a firm believer in updating equipment, but here's why I brought this up. We still have roads throughout the county where the operators are still putting two bridges on each side of the road, they're making them totally flat to where it's like a river when it rains. We still have ditches in the county that need to be cleaned out, and I've seen no activity from this board or this commission, um, on putting together something going forward to get the ditches cleaned out. We've got ourselves into this mess, we need to dig ourselves out, and the only way to start fixing the county roads is to get the ditches fixed, so we don't keep rebuilding roads. And, um, back in June, I met with Commissioner, uh, Howard, met with, um, Derek Brown, and I had a phone call, a two-hour phone call with, uh, my Commissioner Dickerson. And I discussed two of the most important things that I thought was facing this county. One was the ditches, which I've mentioned, so I don't need to keep beating that heart. And the, the second thing was the flooding issue. Now that the floodings all went away, I hope that this commission has not forgot the issues that arrived during the flooding, about sending out a massive amount of people with barricades and try to save lives. I offered David Lee and, and the three people that I just mentioned, I offered them a solution about putting flashing lights at both deal, and David Lee was researching it last I knew, and I talked to him this morning, he said he's still researching it, about, you know, like using, uh, KDOT uses, uh, uh, solar power to, to power the energy for the flashing lights. So I just wanted to bring these issues back up, and I would ask that this commission put these on as agenda items, either on study sessions or regular meetings, so that we can get something done, maybe for good, and take these off of our plate forever and not have to worry about these issues. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Takes us to the consent agenda. Items today that need considered and approved on the consent agenda are the commission meeting minutes for October the 16th, 2019, and that's the only item on the consent agenda. Would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Come on.
Second? Have a motion in second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, first item of business, consider and approve awarding the culvert bid for 11 12-inch by 30-inch culverts to Wellborn Sales, and seven 15-inch by 30, excuse me, that other one was 12-inch by 30-foot, and seven 15-inch by 30-foot, and six 24-inch by 30-foot to drainage products. David?
Commissioners, uh, you know, we have obviously replaced a lot of culverts this year, we need to replenish our stock. We sent, uh, the bids, bid sheets to at least three different, uh, vendors, and we got responses from, from all three. Uh, it's our recommendation that we go with the lowest and best bid for each one of the pipe sizes. Wellborn Sales came in the lowest, uh, on the 12 by 30, and Drainage Products, uh, were the lowest on the other two, uh, by just a little bit, so we would, uh, we would ask for approval to make these purchases.
Hey? The pretty cut and dried.
These are all metal?
Back to it here. Anybody have any other questions on this? Okay, would look for a motion to approve awarding the culvert bids as stated.
Second?
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, second item, consider approving the purchase of three 2019 120-14 AWD motor graders from Foley.
Commissioners, um, essentially what we've got here, um, we're asking to purchase three motor graders with the exact same specs that we purchased one earlier this year. The three in question, we're up on, on time, they've hit, uh, next month, they will hit the, the five-year mark, and so per our agreement, um, with, with Foley, um, this is a, a trade-in to be able to get the, um, oh, the, the discounted price and whatnot that, uh, that they stipulated whenever we bought the machines to begin with. Again, we are moving to a, um, a seven-year 9,500-hour, um, let me get that right.
9,000.
Yeah, 9,000-hour trade-in, uh, rather than the five-year 7,500-hours. We feel like the, uh, the machines at the end of that, that additional two-year period, um, will still be viable. I don't believe we'll be losing any, um, you know, I, I'm not anticipating these machines spending any more time in the shop or breakdowns or anything else, they'll still be in good condition. And so, our recommendation is to go with the, it's essentially the same deal that we had, uh, earlier this year, the same machine, same spec, same cost, um, all of those parameters remain the same.
Do you have, any idea how many hours you have on this?
Yes, uh, all three of the machines are going to, uh, come in under this, the 7,500-hour mark, but I think it's either November 19th or November 29th is when the five-year time limit is.
And the reason I ask is you're going up two years, but you're only going up another 1,500 hours, so there's a chance that we might hit ours before we hit.
There's always that chance, but we have, um, in the last year, we have really put an emphasis on, uh, monitoring the idle hours and correcting, uh, or not correcting, but adjusting our behavior, that was leading to higher idle hours, and so, uh, I, I think that there's a direct correlation in, in those changes that we've made internally to the fact that we're, we've got three machines that, uh, are gonna hit the time rather than the hours. And so I'm, I'm confident moving forward that, um, we'll have the same situation, I'm hopeful that we'll have the same situation down the road.
At least be in the ballpark.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I, I feel confident that, uh, we're gonna be okay there.
These are our budgeted, right?
They are, um, now, I, I will tell you that, uh, in 2023, we'll have to adjust the budget to cover this, but, um, I'm, I'm seeing that out ahead of us, and our other, um, special machinery line item, making plans, uh, so that my overall budget shouldn't have to go up, we will just move dollars around within the existing budget to cover this, uh, this added expense, because we'll have a whole stack of motor graders that we'll be paying for, we'll have a two-year period where, um, currently that line item is like 274, 275,000, it will have to go up for a two-year period before it drops back down to that 275. And so, uh, again, we've got a few years before that comes before us, but I am seeing that, uh, out ahead and, and planning purchases, uh, so that the dollars are there.
Are there's new machines, uh, requiring extra training on the, anything new on them?
Uh, the, the most significant thing is the all-wheel drive, and, uh, I can tell you that it is, um, it, that's a different component, and they are, um, they're, how they drive the machine and how they utilize it is slightly different, uh, some things that they, um, had maybe struggled with, with the existing machines, the all-wheel drive makes up for it, there's other things that the, the older, bigger machines can do that, uh, this machine may take an extra pass possibly, um, so there are some nuances to it, but it's just a matter of getting used to it. I've had some of our more experienced, uh, operators use this new blade a little bit, and they seem pretty happy with it, uh, so I think it's just, um, like with any new technology, uh, there's a little bit of a learning curve, but I think overall, we're gonna be satisfied with these. And, and quite frankly, um, um, if by chance, the overall, uh, response after we've used these for a few years, when it's time for the next round, we will take all that into consideration before we make additional purchases.
Questions on this? If not, would look for a motion to approve the purchase of three 2019 120-14 AWD motor graders from Foley.
Make that motion to approve?
Have a motions or a second?
Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, that's the only thing that we have today for items of business, takes us to staff reports. Gary?
The annex lot is gonna be closed down this weekend, we are having crack sealing done, that's something we've been talking about, obviously, for months, and that is going to happen this weekend, and so, we've let everyone in this building know, and we've asked them to disseminate that message to their staffs, patients, et cetera, and so, we don't anticipate it will be an issue, but just know that that is happening, and then, that'll of course be followed up in the spring with, we will be in front of you recommending a full slurry seal and a painting, and once we do that, with the new, uh, line installed, I mean, we should be set on this lot for some time, so, um, it's an exciting project, because it's something that we've gotten a lot of complaints about for years, and to have it knocked out, um, I think will be great for us, so, um, Monday, we are going to be in front of you at a study session, we're gonna have at least a couple items, one is discussing the district court HVAC, um, we've got some options on replacing that, and we wanna discuss it with you before we go any further forward, because that is, to do that right, it's a fairly significant expense, I mean, we could pull out what is there and just replace it, but Brandon will tell you that there's some issues with doing that, it's not designed particularly well, but we'll have that as an option, but the intention will be to discuss that, we will also discuss, um, pay for our corrections officers and court security, we discussed that here a couple weeks ago, uh, we've done a lot of research into that, and we are lagging significantly behind much smaller counties with less workload, and so, we'll put some numbers and some data in front of you on Monday. Casey Brady, our, uh, communications director, she will be starting the 29th of this month, um, so, we have already, I've already got a, kind of a tentative plan for how to get her rolling. For now, we're gonna office, her primary office is gonna be out in the visitor's center, um, she will probably have a secondary office, and, you know, at some point, if we talk about a remodel in here, I can envision space in here, but we have other projects that we would like to get taken care of first, but she'll be here on the 29th, um, I think the, the plan initially is to just get her super familiar with the county's operation, what it is that we do, um, have her get to know all of the directors and electeds, what their needs are, how she can help them, and I feel like that will give her a very solid platform to jump off of, and so, uh, super excited about that, and interestingly, um, I've heard from so many people in the community about how they're excited and congratulating us on making a great hire, I mean, she, she has done very, very well over at Advent Health, so, I'm excited that we were able to get her, but she will be here on the 29th, which is a Friday, but we do that, uh, it, it helps reduce the lag in benefits, so we have a 30-day wait period, and it, it's an HR matter, but there's a reason we started her on a Friday, the last working day of October, as opposed to kicking it over into November, but, have any questions about that? Uh, certainly, just reach out and let me know.
I don't have any questions on that, uh, I'll just, while we're talking about that, let you know, the rest of you, being I am the representative on the tourism board, that Susan has chose to cancel all the tourism board meetings for the rest of the year, um, she put out an email to me the other day that, uh, they're gonna cancel those and wait till, uh, Casey's onboard, and figure out where they're gonna go with, with that board, and how that board's gonna be affected, or what's, what's gonna happen, so, I guess she felt that there wasn't any point in continuing to move forward until Casey's, uh, there with them and deciding what we're actually gonna do about that board, so.
Well.
Just let you know, that's why I haven't had any tourism board meetings lately, and won't have any till after the first year.
Well, and I'll, I'll also tell you, I don't anticipate that being, uh, a Casey or even my decision on that advisory board, that's gonna be something we discuss with you, and you will give us direction on, what we do know is that the current system, it hasn't worked like we thought it would, um, in terms of sending people through the, who need, who are requesting TGT money, sending them through the advisory board, and then up to this board, it just, it's, it's created issues that, I, I think needlessly, and so, we'll talk to you about maybe a different way to do that, a different way to utilize the advisory board, but at the end of the day, it's ultimately gonna be the Board of Commissioners' decision on how they wanna utilize that, so.
Well, I think we made a good effort on putting the board together, I've just not, and being a part of that board, I'm just not sure that board totally understands what their responsibilities really are or aren't, so, we'll be able to work that out with, uh, down the road too, so.
She's starting November 29th?
No, October 29th, here next week, end of next week. What is?
Next Tuesday is the 29th.
Oh, yeah, I had November pulled up, um, it would be the 31st, I apologize, so Halloween, that Thursday, so, thank you, Roy.
David?
Seems that, uh, we are kinda in culvert replacement mode right now, uh, we've had a number of them that we have, um, come across that have failed, and we have been in the process of getting those replaced. We had one on Georgia Road, south of LaBette, that, uh, we replaced last week, um, and then Friday, late Friday morning, we had, we got a call from a citizen, a, a local farmer out on Stafford, saw a hole about a, I don't know, foot diameter on the edge of the, right on the edge of the road, and Stafford's a, a blacktop road, and he was concerned about it, rightfully so, called us. Uh, when we got out there, um, um, our foreman stuck his head in the hole and could see that, um, much like the Idaho road bridge situation, uh, the water had gotten in around the pipe that you really couldn't see visually, but it had gotten in there and boiled over time this year with all the rain that we've had, and washed that material out, uh, and so, the only thing holding up, basically, the eastbound lane was the asphalt again, so, uh, we immediately closed that lane, uh, and started pulling our folks off of other projects to get out there to, um, close the road down and start, uh, digging into this and, and replacing the pipe, so, uh, by early afternoon, we had the, had the road closed, we had detours, sending folks around the area, uh, we dug the pipe out, um, and the, the pipe actually had a hole in it also, which was contributing to the, to the issue, um, pulled the pipe out, dug the material out, replaced the pipe, and, and compacted the, the, the material on top of it, by the time they got done with that, uh, early Friday evening, the asphalt plant was closed, so we had to keep the road closed over the weekend, uh, and we got it back opened, uh, Tuesday, late Tuesday morning, so yesterday morning, we're able to open that road back up. Also yesterday, we ended up closing, let's see, uh, Iowa, just south of Rock Creek, had a, had a similar issue, that, um, pipe had failed, and so we started on that, uh, that, that road should be reopened today. Also today, we're closing Jackson Road, just, um, just east of Idaho, at the Homewood exit, there is a, uh, pipe that was, uh, a fairly long pipe, uh, that was put in whenever they built I-35, and, um, it has finally failed and, and causing some issues, so we're going to start, uh, working on that today, I anticipate that road being closed, um, at least through the end of the week, uh, it's possible that that may bleed over into early next week, uh, there's a, a lot of dirt work associated with that one, plus it's a, a really long pipe, uh, it was a special order pipe that we had to get, total length is, is over 90 feet, uh, the diameter of the pipe isn't, isn't, um, it's only 42 inches, so it's not huge, but it has to travel a long ways because of the, uh, the slope of the road, and so, uh, we're gonna dig that out, we've talked to, uh, the landowners, several of the landowners, we tried to make contact with them to let them know, um, what's going on, uh, one of the landowners, uh, let us know that they actually have a, um, oh, kind of a community email where they let each other know about certain things, and she was going to, uh, notify the neighborhood to help with that notification, there's, they can easily get out the other way, they have to travel a little bit further, um, but, uh, there's no way around not closing the road, so we're working on that, which is a, is a big deal. In addition to all of that, we've managed to, uh, get out and do some, some blade patching, uh, we've been to, uh, the bridge around Lane, uh, we've taken care of, uh, also, uh, some patching on Sand Creek in Colorado, north of Shawnee, needed some, uh, significant, significant attention as well, so we've been working on that, um, and we will continue patching as we have time. And also with it being harvest, uh, there's a lot of minimum maintenance roads that we've had to get down to shape up enough so that the farmers can get in, so we've been working with, with the farming community to make sure that they have access to their crops, uh, when they need to get in. And then, in addition to all of that, we continue working on washouts and fixing road issues, uh, we're aware that we've got problems all over, um, a lot of the, um, in fact, I was out on Friday afternoon looking at some roads with, um, with some folks, and, and many of the ditches that, um, the citizens were concerned about, were still holding water, and so, uh, it, it's awfully difficult to make the final repairs to things whenever we continue to get rain and, and, uh, standing water in these areas, um, but we are aware of these things and are, are trying to make, uh, make progress on them.
I just, talking about that, and I realize that some of our ditches, like you said, can't be worked on right now, and, uh, I know you said our blade operators are going to training and different type of training and talking about different things, but I drove a road a while back, and this is not a new issue, even for, since I've been up here, even before the rains, there had been comments and complaints about the blade operators windrowing down the sides of the road, and some do, some don't, I've driven some roads that are pretty good, and they're blading them like you would want them bladed, but I drove a road here a while back, and the ditches weren't that bad, and the, they'd windrowed them down both sides of the road, and I just, I think some of our blade operators are blading that way, even when they have a ditch, they're, um, not all of them, some of them are cutting it down where it goes to the, to the ditch, but I don't think all of them are, even when they have a ditch that they can cut the road down to where it should be, they're still windrowing them.
Some of that, and I would have to see this particular area to, to know for sure, but in general, some of those areas where they, where they have the double windrows, it are areas that, um, they have, those areas are, have been real soft on the edges, and so they are trying to dig down a little bit to get to drier land, drier ground, and stockpiling that, that material in windrows so that it will dry out so that they can reuse it, uh, that is, that is some of it, and again, without seeing specifically the areas that you're talking about, it, I, I don't know for sure. In general, the most important thing with the roads is the crown, um, without, without a, uh, without crown in the road, you're gonna get, um, um, you know, that's where your massive potholes develop on roads where there's not enough crown, and so, when they, a lot of times, when they dig down a little bit, it's in an effort to make sure there's crown, that's not, um, that's not in every case, and, and we are working to correct, uh, some of these deficiencies in our roads. They didn't happen overnight, and they're not gonna be fixed overnight, but we are spending more time with the blade operators, uh, we continue to meet, uh, it's been a little while yet, I need to, uh, get back together with them, but we are talking about these things, and, and will be, um, adjusting things a, as we go here, it, it's not, um, I, I, the only way I can really describe it is that, uh, it may appear that- that we're doing business as usual, that's not really the case.
One of the things, Commissioner Howard, that I've heard a couple of you say and I've heard from a lot of people, and I think I've observed it myself, I don't think all of our blade operators blade the same way, and that's problematic to me. And we're going to change that if I have to do it myself. We have got to establish a way that we blade roads in this county. And so I'm obviously not qualified to establish what way that is, but so many of our problems come from the fact that in one district, roads will look a certain way, different district, and I, I don't, I don't think it has to be that way. I think we just need to get our guys, the management and the training on that that they need. And so that's an area that I'm going to be working on with David to ensure that it's, um, you know, if there is, if we do have blade operators that are doing it in an ideal way or are close to an ideal way, then we'll figure out a way to train our other ones so that they're doing it that same way, um, because we know they're not all performing the same way at this point, so.
And I think it's, it's definitely improving with the training and so forth. I think one of the issues we had in years past, in my opinion, is we really didn't have per se a foreman that was totally over the blade operators in the roads to go out and basically say, "This isn't acceptable, this is the way you need to do it." And we really haven't had that. I think for a long time, our blade operators have just been totally out there on their own, doing their thing. And, and I think that now that you're getting some training and what you're talking about, I think, uh, we get the right one or the right person that knows what they're to do and how to do it and, uh, works with the ones that aren't getting it that way and get where they're doing it too, I think. It's going to take time, I understand that, but, but I think that, uh, that's pretty much it because you'll drive some of our roads and they're pretty good and you'll drive other roads that the ditches aren't really that much worse than the other roads, but they're not anywhere close to where another blade operator may be doing it, so.
A, a couple of additional things. Um, one, we are providing more support to the, to the blade operators, um, and I have things in the works to provide even more support to them. Uh, the other thing I will say i- is that, uh, you, you know, things may appear to be the same mile after mile as far as conditions, but every mile of road has different, different circumstances and different conditions that warrant, uh, certain practices. Uh, that's not to say that, you know, we don't have, um, a, a lot of room for improvement because there are lots of things that we can improve on. But the fact is, um, all of our roads do have different circumstances. Farming practices are different today than they, they have been. Uh, you get more, more runoff, um, uh, quicker because of the, uh, no-till practices. We have folks that are terracing their, their terraces right to our, our little ditches. Uh, so we have issues that, um, um, make the job of the blade operator the most difficult job that we have in this county. And so, uh, I recognize that and, and we are working to support them, um, by providing them, you know, good equipment and, and solid training and, um, support and leadership and, uh, giving them somebody to, uh, to visit with and, and to review the, the road situations that they, that they encounter, setting priorities, all of those things are part of what we are doing today that will continue and we will continue to, continue to expand that. Um, and, and it is my intention to have, um, um, you know, some, some guidelines, policies, if you will, in place, uh, regarding blading. But this whole year, uh, and I can't speak to what's happened in the past years, but this whole year, all we've done is, all we've been able to do is triage on our roads. Uh, we've been, you know, I, I, you, you all know the historic water and, and floods and snow and ice and all of those things that we faced this year set us back, uh, on our roads years. Um, and we are starting to, starting to make a little progress on the condition of the driving surface. Um, um, the, the, there's no doubt that the driving surfaces are in much better shape than, than they were, uh, two weeks ago or a month ago or six weeks ago. Um, now, are they all perfect? Nope, not by a long shot, but they are in much better condition and folks are able to travel safely on the vast majority of our roads. And we are working to make sure that all the roads are, uh, uh, folks are able to safely travel down. The next, the next challenge is working on those, you know, on the, on the edges. Um, it's still too wet in a lot of cases to do any significant ditch work. Um, uh, in the areas that it, it is dry enough, we are starting to, to get into the ditches, um, and starting to retrieve, uh, some of the rock that's washed away multiple times this year. It's a slow process simply because of the scope of the, the job that we've got ahead of us.
When you clean the ditches, it sounds like you're talking about using a motor grader because of the moisture, that's why we can't get to it?
That's, that's, that's part of it, uh, but we also, you know, we, we've only, we've got a skid loader, a couple of backhoes and a trackhoe. Um, so, you know, it may appear that we haven't made much of a dent, but, uh, we are getting in there. We've had, uh, I can't tell you how many times we've had a, a motor grader stuck this year because of them trying to get into the, into the ditches and do this work. Yeah, it, it.
Does it say, is generally, do we use motor grader or we dip them out with the hoe?
Uh, a little bit of both, it depends on the circumstances.
You mentioned renting the machine to maybe where we can make more progress on that?
Haven't done that yet, um, but those are things that, that we're looking at. Um, quite frankly, it's, you know, a lot of our attention and resources have been diverted to taking care of these culverts that have failed. Trying to prioritize and, and do the things that, that need to be done right now, trying to do those right now, so.
Assuming you don't find any more culverts, would you say you're close to making the switch from road surface over to edge as far as where you start allocating services?
I, 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 it's, it's maybe in certain areas, we can do that. Um, but as far as a, uh, all-out, um, full-scale attack on, on all of our ditches, that's, it, it, it takes, um, we have nine blade districts, each one of them have, have these issues, and it's not necessarily a one-man job to do these, these ditching projects. And so it is partly a, at least a, a resource issue, making sure that we've got the resources dedicated to be able to do these things. You know, the, some of the areas, um, that we've tried to do, uh, just with the blades, they, they look awful because they were not able to, um, uh, fully complete the job. Can come back with additional information in the coming days to, um, provide a little more, uh, information to you if you'd like.
Takes this commissioner comments and board reports?
Uh, the only thing I might mention to you, y'all got the letter on the, on the windfarm deal. I went to a deal in Oklahoma a couple of months ago, Southwest States, and there were main, one of the main topics down there was educating the public on wind generators and the legal aspects and so forth. So I came back and I'm also a Farm Bureau member and, and I've been talking with the Farm Bureau for quite a while, if they would be interested in sponsoring something that we, we need something to educate the public and ourselves before the fact, not after the fact, not after they start to move in and then start talking about it. So, uh, after about two months, they decided to put this together and we're going to have it out to Yochow County and I think it'll be, uh, very informational to the public and us both to hear the legal aspects about it, not just what they do and how they do it, but actually hear, uh, the legal aspects behind it, what they're responsible for and what we need to look for when we're making the decision. Uh, that's all I got. Uh, I know you mentioned, uh, the trackhoe and I know they, they did Texas and that section in there and Jackson Road and Vermont where clean them and they all did it with a, with a backhoe and I don't think any of them would have been accomplished with a motor grader. I mean, yeah, a lot of them can, but those just wouldn't have happened, so. That's all I got.
Well, I think most of us were, or all of us were at the county-city USD 290 dinner on Wednesday luncheon. Uh, on Thursday, several of us were also at the planning commission, uh, where they were discussing the, uh, sustainable energy, um, and getting more information and the, and public comment, and I think that was the first time we had public comment on it and, and got to hear that. On Friday, um, there was a chamber coffee for revitalized creations and then I did get to spend a couple hours with David and one of my constituents on Friday afternoon driving roads. Um, and it is, it just being able to listen to David and really finding out, you know, why they're doing what they're doing and, and what their plan is and, and it really was, it really was good. And if you really have, um, questions on it, he would be glad to do that. There was a couple, most of the areas he already knew about. There were a couple of, uh, areas that he added to his list, his long list of areas that needed to be, anyway, it was good to go out and do that. And then I can't imagine that we only had this much, uh, uh, business today considering that there was a tornado that hit Ottawa yesterday. Um, but thank goodness, it was only an exercise, they're in the middle of a three-day exercise and, and not only is it people from Franklin County, but there are people from counties all over that have come, uh, to be a part of this exercise and it really is a good, hopefully it's kind of like, uh, changing a tire or CPR, right? You, you hopefully, you know, you want to know how to do it, but hopefully you never have to, and we hope that we never have to. Um, but it is good to kind of know what's going on, so that's it.
I went to the planning commission last Thursday night and renewable energy was the main focus of most of the people there and it's very difficult to make, make rules on solar or wind that fits, fits everybody. Uh, they had a company there that does, uh, uh, small-scale wind farm or solar farms there and, uh, Joe spoke about his, there about his, um, personal solar, uh, setup. And it's hard to, it's really hard to make, make the rules that, uh, apply to the big wind farms, the small wind farms and, and, uh, and the planning commission struggled with that and, uh, we had a presentation from a, a company that is leasing property for, uh, solar, solar energy production. And, uh, planning commission didn't come to any conclusion, but that they tabled it and needed to look into it further because, uh, pretty difficult to make rules for commercial, commercial collection of natural energies and how you distribute them and, uh, that's, that's basically what I got out of, out of that, uh, meeting.
Well, one thing is, it's like, uh, I guess one thing in Franklin County's favor is there's a lot of counties in the area and throughout the state have already went through this, so there's a lot of information out there that, uh, we'll be able to, to use from their experiences and what they went through. It's not like we're the, the first one trying this, so we're going to be the one that's experimenting with the different ways to handle it. We ought to be able to get a lot of information from the other places that's, that's been through this before and learn from them, I hope, so. Uh, I also went to the luncheon and that's all I've been to, uh, since the last meeting. We do have a study session scheduled for next Monday, commission meeting next Wednesday. We've got some commission meetings coming up, we'll talk about later. I think the November the 13th is that when we're going to, several, at least three or four of us going to be at, uh, four of us going to be at the, uh...
Casey.
We won't have a meeting that day, so canceled then. We'll talk about that next, uh, on the 30th when we get a little closer to that. Um, looking forward to seeing Paul on the agenda before too long to give us, uh, update on what he's got going since he's got in there, so anytime you want to get on the agenda and fill us in, we'd love to have you, so. If nothing else, would look for a motion to adjourn. So, move, have a motion as their second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I had one eye, looks like we're going to be able, oh. All opposed? Adjourn.